Okay, I do hereby call this Mays City Council July 21st, 2025 meeting to order and ask for roll call.
President.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
Councilmember Jeff.
Here.
Councilmember Dr.
Here.
Thank you. If everybody would rise, pledge allegiance in the moment.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be seated. Item four on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Any changes from staff on the agenda? Anything from council? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I would move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five, public comments. Do we have any public comments tonight? For those of you that came in, if you didn't sign in and you want to talk, we'll let you do so. What's that?
I'm first on the list.
No, we're not letting you. You're always first on the list. Just joking. All right, for public comments, what we normally do is we allow three minutes. If you could state your name and address, we'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir. I'm Tyler Lowman at 11339 West Wilkinson Court here in Mays and specifically wanted to talk about the 1% sales tax proposal. Definitely in favor of needing some sort of different revenue stream in that also within the proposed budget. It shows that the mill levy is going down, which is obviously a good thing with the cost of living going, you know, crazy across the board. So 1% sales tax just seems like it's adding on more and more to the burden of the taxpayers here, but obviously the citizens might not be paying as much into other people that use our infrastructure. In the case of infrastructure as well, that was one of the proponents on the flyer that was sent out. I saw in the budget that was roughly $6 million of the expenditures for this year going to improvement fund as well as debt payoff for previous years. So I guess just one thing that I would ask, I know that the website is going through kind of a redesign. I don't know if it's possible to kind of put like a dashboard of like, I know there's a proposal of what infrastructure projects that are currently like on the docket and what the priority list is. If there would be some sort of way to make that more transparent for people to see not only like what is the city looking into, you know, as you drive around Mays and see what kind of infrastructure projects are being worked and proposed, but also to see maybe the rough magnitude or dollar value to just get some more insight in for the citizens in general, just to see not only the cost of some of these, because it is crazy how much the construction costs and maintenance costs these things are. So just a couple of my two cents there. Obviously, I'm incredibly biased because I want new bike paths and sidewalks and whatnot. So I'm definitely in favor for it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Tyler. I think if you want to talk to staff about our priority list and stuff, we have had many meetings. In fact, we had one today and we kind of do have a priority list for the most part, but it's not set in stone at this time. Our number one priority to be determined, but right now if we were to vote, if we were to get this would be 119th Street. But it could change, but it's, that's right now, I think, number one on our hit parade is an example. And then Tyler's behind that a little bit, and then we have a lot of sidewalks, as you know, which you're all for and we're all for, so. But we appreciate it. Does anybody else care to speak at this time, even though you're not signed up? You guys are good? Okay, thank you for coming. All right, with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Item number six.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number seven, we have business. 7A is signage and streetscape improvements. Joe, I understand you're going to be talking a lot tonight.
Well, it depends on how many questions you ask, sir.
Well, you know, we're good at asking questions.
Okay, so just to kind of get to where we're at tonight, so back in December, we came before the council to present options for LED signage and streetscape improvements near Academy Avenue and Mays Road. Council approved moving forward with PEC to produce schematic design and prepare bid documents for a two-sided LED message board. Tonight, Tim Azir from PEC is with us to talk and walk through the design and the challenges with this project. We'll show you some pictures and a video, and when he's done, I'll be back up to talk about costs and the way forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tim and I'll drive the slides for him.
That looks like Tyler.
That is Tyler.
That is Tyler.
Good evening, Mayor, council. As you can see in the 3D model that we've built of the overall design, we've got a plaza on the east side here with an LED sign on it and acrylic with a Mays logo on the back that would also light up. Like we've got another graphic that would show. We didn't practice this, so give us a little. So there's the night view of what we're looking at. The existing crosswalk that's there with the push button and the RRFBs would remain. We've pulled that sign back about as much as we can, trying to balance visibility from the street, but also not blocking the RFB crosswalk, which is critical, especially in this direction. We'll have uplighting on the trees, mirroring most of what we've done along Academy already, bringing some of that same brick pattern into this area so that it all blends together seamlessly. The other image on the other side of the street, hopefully. That plaza mostly exists now. The walls were built with a previous project. We're going to take the grass area that's in front of that wall, bring that brick pattern into it, bring in some of the same stone benches that we have at the community center, same trees, tree grates. That sign will not be there as part of the project. It would be moved. Even though it's shown in this graphic, we were showing a possibility there. It may end up there ultimately, but we weren't sure what staff wanted to do with it. So that's still just still being made, but the night view of this is similar. You've got the same toe kick lighting in the benches that you have down at the community center, uplighting on the trees. We have a provision in the plans to light that sign, weight finding sign, if it does want to go back there. If not, we can take that out of the plans at bidding or right after. We also have produced a video showing, and we'll see if this works or not. The purpose behind the video is we had questions about visibility of the sign in both directions and how it would look. So this should be at about three and a half foot height, which is a national standard for driver height. But it should give you a look coming both from the south and from the north as to what that sign will look like. Give you a view of both sides for visibility, but also how much is covered, you know, that we've got signage in front of that. You can see most of what we're trying to see there. It's a little more difficult in the other direction, and then at night, that really lights up a lot. But we tried to create a separation between the LED sign and the RFB so that at night, when those are flashing, you could pick those out with a black background, not behind the sign itself. This is coming from the north. You get a little less visibility because of that crosswalk sign, but that's in front here, which is not something we can move. It's got to be at the top of the ramp for that crosswalk, so we don't have any flexibility there. And we didn't want to put that sign any farther away from the street to limit visibility behind the fence in either direction. So with that, I'd happy to stand for any questions you may have.
Can you go back to the, just the flat image of it on the? Going west or going?
East side of the road.
The east side of the road.
East side. East side.
Sorry.
Probably the first image.
Oh, it's not working?
You just want to slide over to the video.
Yeah, it's the very first image.
You have to go straight up with your pointer.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to point out that I do like it a lot higher than what I thought it was going to be. I thought it was going to be way lower on the, when we first talked about the other side of the street, it seemed like it was going to be a lot lower, especially the electronic image. I like that. But my question was about the maze colors on the side. Are we getting away from the whole makeup we had them do that was kind of the maze, the corn look? Because I thought that's what we were kind of.
This specifically is mirroring what is along Academy for the Arts District. So the blue waves and some of the things at the amphitheater that were all done as part of that overall.
We had done a whole like workup for signage for maze and I thought.
It's going to be like Indian corn.
Yeah, like the Indian corn colors and all that. That was just my only question was if we, if we were set on doing the blues like that, or if we want to incorporate more to match what eventually Mays will have at our entry points was my only question. I know Academy Arts has got its own look, but.
I think that would be my answer is regardless of what you do for the rest of the city, the Arts District itself has this theme already, and we tried to bring that same thing to the other side of the street to tie it all together with the existing Arts District.
I just wanted to mention it. I don't, I mean, it's not that big of a deal either way. I like it how it's set up and it's got it much.
That's more design.
The LED much higher. I think that for visibility will be much better than what it originally proposed. Yeah.
From the south because of all the pedestrians.
Did you consider maybe elevating it even higher for that reason?
On the backside of it?
No, the LED.
Just the sign as a whole.
Yeah.
It's already six. Six by eight sign, so eventually it gets a little too much, but.
I had to ask that.
You won't be able to see it, just so you guys understand, you probably will be able to see it as quick coming from the south.
From the north.
From the north to the south.
Yeah, yeah. I think along there, it's a challenge either way. I mean, the other side of the street, it would have been cock funny and would have been harder to see as well, too.
As a reminder, the reason we put it on that side of the street is when we were over on the west side of the street, we started causing visibility issues at the intersection. Just as we found the wayfinder sign that was in that picture creates visibility issues for drivers being that far out. Because we already, we have the mill bank boxes already there. We have telephone poles there. We have a lot of other things we're dealing with, and just adding one more thing in on the west side to obscure drivers' views is just not a smart thing to do. So I want to point out that we got, it's in your packet, but you know, the engineer's estimate to complete this project for the east side, this does include contingencies, would be $278,048.10, and the west side would be 102,740 cents. Construction would run $380,748.50 with the contingency being $34,613.50. If you decide to move forward with this tonight, staff would also like to enter into a supplemental agreement with PEC to provide the bidding services for a word of the contract because we did not include that in the schematic design contract. Reason we would like to use PEC for that is staff really doesn't have a way to do bidding. We don't have a website that's capable. We don't have a way to drive people to our websites. We'd like to use PEC to get our bidding services done. And we would expect if you approve this tonight, this will go out and bid in August with construction to occur this fall. As a reminder, this is one of those projects that in 2024, we allowed roughly $295,000 worth of funds set aside to do Academy project, things such as this to expire and cash carryover into 2025. So we do have that money in our capital improvement fund to be used towards this project if you so choose. And with that, we'll stand for any other questions you have.
You know, kind of piddly on my part, but one of my ideas was to sell bricks. Have you, is that still kind of somewhat popular? Doesn't generate a lot of money, but the idea to be able to buy a brick, because we've got a lot of brick here.
Well, so we have, you know, we did this, we've got an airpark out at McConnell that's got some vintage aircraft in it. And as people retire out there, they can buy a brick for $25 and have their name inscribed on it. We certainly could do that as a separate project from this where people could come along and at any point buy a brick. You have to have so many bricks sold before you can have them engraved.
We could start a, we could start a brick campaign.
You can start a brick campaign and maybe get, you know, 25 or 30 and then another 25 or 30, but that's something where we could recoup some dollars.
It's not a lot, I realize, in the general scheme. It's just, it's just unique that, you know, I've been in Mays for a long time and it would be nice to have my name there on that project.
You can actually have that brick sale go to a future project, too, so.
Yeah, I just, there's an opportunity.
Yes.
For families or individuals, if we move forward with this to put their name in bricks, so to speak.
Staff could certainly look into that.
I mean, I don't even know what it takes to put your name in a brick. I have no idea.
I happen to know a guy that does that. Yeah.
It's just, it's just, it's not a big revenue raiser. It's more of a unique thing for Mays that Maysites can put their name in something in a project that is going to be there for many, many years to come.
And maybe that's a project that the community foundation might do as well.
Great idea, great idea.
Could even be a fundraiser for them.
I just don't want us to lose sight of that if we move forward with this.
You have the option of just doing the east side and leaving the, for sales or the yard sale sign, green space over on the west side, or you can do the whole project and clean that intersection up.
Looking at the money again, you say we have 295,000.
We have 295,000.
And the total project to do both sides is how much again?
Roughly 380,748.50 plus contingencies. So, yeah.
Can we do one side now and another side later? Is that going to cost more money down the road?
Just to give you an idea where we're at, six months ago, this project was $40,000 cheaper. So the longer we wait, the more expensive it gets, and if we bid it one part at a time, it's probably going to come in a little more expensive to do the west side later. But that is certainly your call. Yeah.
So I'll offer my opinion. I think that I actually like the new design better than I like the old one with the blues, and I like how it ties in with Academy Arts. So I think that's great. I kind of wonder if having a two-sided LED is even worth it, or if we should just have one that faces traffic that's going from the south to the north. I'm sure there's a little bit of money there. It's probably not as much as we'd hope that would be. But 90% of people that are going to see it driving from the south to the north would be coming back that other direction. So eventually they're either coming from the north and south, and then they'll see it going back north. But that's my opinion. I'm not sure that the, the north side being an LED is, is worth whatever investment that is. I don't know, Tim, if you have an idea what that, if we switch it to a one-sided sign.
I did at one time. We worked with a sign company just because this is not my specific area of expertise. So I want to make sure you guys got what you should get out of this. But one of the reasons we ended up with a two-way sign on one side was it is significantly cheaper than trying to put an opposing sign on the other side of the street. So in, in respect to getting traffic in both directions, this is a better option than trying to put one on the other side of the street, especially when that one had as many visibility issues as Joe already mentioned. This is an easier way to do it, and it's a better location from that sense. And by the time you build the base and wire everything up, the cost of the screen itself is so inconsequential, it's almost not worth mentioning. And by the time you go to replace these in 10, 15 years, you'll have everything there to be able to do it on this side or put the one on the other side of the street.
Would it be asking much to have that as like an alternate in the bid, that it's two-sided versus a one-sided sign? Just so we could make that decision based on dollars?
We can definitely do that. My initial thought is how do you secure the backside of it? It may just be a blank panel, but we're going to have to put something there, but if that's something that you want to do as an add alternate, we can definitely do that.
Maybe you could take the blue waves across the back if it was one-sided.
True, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
May not always be there. Yeah.
That'd be nice.
How is? How is the sign, do we, is it kind of like the Woodard sign where we control what goes on there from City Hall?
Yeah, so this would be a, and I have an IP address to it, and Tristan can sit here at City Hall or whoever and can program that sign.
And it specs enough that it'll can do pictures and all that kind of stuff, like, just like a TV screen? Okay.
Yeah, we, we did meet with PEC and the sign company and talked about specifications, talked about lighting, because at night it needs to dim a little bit so we don't keep the neighbors up across the street. There's some concern with light pollution during nighttime hours, and we definitely want the pixel count to be right so that people actually can see what they're looking at.
I do think the lighting at night makes that intersection seem way more safe to me. I mean, I think with the lighting, I think that'll only help safety as far as pedestrians.
Sarah, can you show me the west, please?
The only other thing that I was going to say is that I think we chose to make an investment in Academy Street a long time ago, and having pieces that are undone is, is not really sticking to that investment. So it's nice to see some progress here.
This was going to be done when we originally put Academy in, and then COVID hit and the prices doubled.
Sure.
No, I know you're not. I'm just saying, this isn't something new. This is something that has been on the drawing board for quite a few years.
Staff feels confident what we have currently sitting in the CIP, even including what's coming up in 2026, et cetera, that we can afford to do both sides of the road if that's what you choose to do. And this is a cash deal, so we're not taking on any more debt to do this project.
Hey, Joe, how does, you know, we did set aside money for, how does that just tie in with the actual funds we set aside for the shade structures?
So the shade structures is a different conversation. We don't know if that would even occur yet this year, if it would occur next year. But, you know, we are, we will be able to tap into that. Mentioned a visitors' fund to pay for potentially up to half of that project. So that one might be funded in part by the convention, the visitors' fund. We would not be bringing both of these projects forward over the next six months if we didn't think we couldn't financially handle them. You know that staff is as concerned as anybody about our financial situation. We're much better shape than we were 18 months ago. But, you know, there's still a lot of forces at play out there. We feel good about these projects. They're both cash projects at the end of the day.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the schematic design as presented and authorize staff to bid both parts of this project.
I will second it. Do we want to put anything in there with PEC going, helping us?
If you want to adjust your motion so that you can allow us to enter into that supplemental contract, that would be awesome. That way we don't have to come back. I don't know what that's going to cost. It may be something Nick can approve, but it's always.
Or we can just wait and do it that way, too.
Yeah, it may be cheap enough that, I don't think it's going to be that much, that Nick can probably approve that one.
I don't know.
If you trust him.
It's up to council, however they want.
Motion is the motion.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve the schematic design as presented and authorize staff to bid both parts of the project. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Item B is in boy, approve the creation of administrative coordinator position description.
So if you recall back in June, our deputy city clerk left employment with the city of Mays. We had created, that was an administrative assistant position that morphed into a deputy city clerk. At the time, we had a position, a person in that position, so we kind of had to work with what we had. Now that we've had the opportunity to have a vacant position and staff have had the ability to look at all of the things that need to be dealt with within City Hall, re-division of labor, we have decided to retire the deputy city clerk position and create a position called administrative coordinator. And we really, really didn't know what to call it, but if you look at the job duties that this position will cover, this position is really working for three different people. The deputy city manager would still supervise the position. However, there's a lot of things that really need to be re-divided to this position and make this a busy position. And it will still allow for the folks that are peeling some duties away from their positions to still be plenty busy. For instance, right now, the city clerk has a lot on her plate with projects, with all of the records management things she has to do per the state statutes. We really need to get a second person up to speed in the backside programming of water, wastewater and stormwater utility accounts. And so we look at this as an opportunity for this person to become the City Hall expert on the backside, how we program and manage the software side of the rate structures for the city. The two ladies up front that work customer service are fantastic. They know their job inside and out. They can do a lot of this work themselves. But what they don't have is they don't have a backup, and one of the ladies up front is part-time, so. And one of the ladies up front is part-time. So when the part-time employee is not here and the full-time employee has to be out, we really struggle. We got a great staff and they really come up and do as best they can. We've got some folks that are in other positions, City Hall, that used to work that desk and they can, they can come in in a pinch. But we really need somebody that can be the go-to number three for the front desk. That is probably the busiest place in City Hall. If you've ever been here and watched them for a period of time, they do a fantastic job. But we really need that, that person that can manage the backside of the system and also come up and do the customer interface side of it as well. And so this is an opportunity for that position to to kind of take on that role. We kind of had hoped the administrative assistant would be that person, but it just never happened. And then the city's significantly behind in the pursuance of collection on delinquent utility accounts. And that by nature is just the fact that it's just one of those things that has to be given up to get other things done. So utility accounts need to be, the collection side of the utility accounts needs to become a primary job duty of somebody in City Hall. This position would still act as the records manager for the city, which would include the policy and disposition schedules and the management of the file room. This position would also manage the day-to-day activities of the Mays Cemetery District, just as the deputy city clerk did. A couple of the new things that would really help out Tristan is this position would become the the assistant on those community events. I know you have really enjoyed what Tristan has done with managing the community events and the number of community events we're having happen, but it comes with a toll. And the toll is inside City Hall. Tristan's HR duties are stretched very thin because she's spending so much time coordinating the management of community events and it's become quite the task for her. So she really needs some help on this where she can tag somebody else to help her out. And then this person would also become her backup for social media accounts, et cetera, so that if Tristan is not available or she's out of town like she is this week, we have somebody that can step in and and deal with social media and media inquiries and things like that. But still serve as a park and tree board cemetery and provide administrative support to other folks. So we think we've loaded this position up and we think we've given help to the positions that really need it. And what I'm asking for you tonight is to consider this job description as a replacement to the deputy city clerk. And we would move forward with advertising this position internally, beginning tomorrow and externally next week. With that, I stand for questions.
As I've been here a little bit, the person that was previously in that position was supposed to do many of these duties. I'll just leave it at that. I know you've added some things here, but I think what you're looking for is somebody that's, that's going to be able to see something that needs to be done and do it and have the ability to work well without supervision or to have.
Ideally, you would want that in all of your employees.
Well, I understand, but this job particularly, like you say, it's working for three people, so it's not an easy thing.
No.
They can get pulled in different directions relatively easily. So but they got to have, I guess.
Multitask, be able to prioritize.
Gravitas, whatever, whatever word you want to use.
Yeah.
This, this position that you've created is is parallel to the one that you're replacing, in my opinion. It's, it's a little more detailed, don't get me wrong. But from a historical point of view, it's kind of, that person that we had was supposed to be doing a lot of these things anyway. But we won't get into that.
Yeah, we're going to, we're just going to be looking for, we're going to be looking for capacity.
Understood. Okay. I think if you get the right person.
Absolutely.
You can, you can help the team.
I've worked with this person many times in my past. I know this person exists.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I would move to approve the creation of the administrative coordinator position description.
Second.
I got a motion and a second to approve the creation of the administrative coordinator position description. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Item C is an update to the 2019 Mays Comprehensive Plan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mays last updated its comprehensive plan in 2019 using 2017, 2018 research and data. The 20, when the 2019 comprehensive plan was approved, the city of Mays had a population of 4,944 residents. Mays also had significantly fewer neighborhood developments, less traffic and fewer school facilities in our community. Today, after just six years, Mays is on the cusp of 8,000 residents with the expectation that we will be over 10,000 residents by 2030. This growth has led to new challenges, significant progress on the 2019 comprehensive plan and a new, and a need to review, review and revise this important policy document for future growth as we look to shape the community in ways that meets the community expectations and values. In December of 2024, the council held a workshop that was primarily focused on strategic planning. It was at this workshop that we identified an out-of-date land use plan and the need to reexamine how we want to see the development and redevelopment going forward. Staff have worked with multiple providers of comprehensive planning expertise over the interceding months, holding multiple discussions and examining scope of work and costs associated with the deliverables. We shared a few of those with you as we've moved forward. In February, one of those consultants was here to provide a workshop on comprehensive planning. Feedback from both the council and Planning Commission was taken into consideration on bringing tonight's recommendation forward. As part of Goal Two of the 2026, 2028 Mays Strategic Plan, revising the comprehensive plan is one of the steps. In 2019, Gould Evans completed our current plan. Gould Evans has rebranded itself as MultiStudio. MultiStudio is familiar with Mays, understands our goals for this iteration of planning and has developed a scope of work that will take about 10 months to deliver a completed update with new land use plan and analysis of our current community planning regulations. In the attached contract and scope, MultiStudio will provide limited regulation update assistance should that need be identified. Comprehensive regulation updates would require additional services that would need to be brought back in a new agreement at a later time. The cost to update this plan stands at $70,450 and would be billed in monthly increments as the work is carried out. The cost of this has been included in the proposed 2026 budget, with some portion of the cost expected to be incurred, incurring in 2025. The contract and scope have been approved as informed by the city attorney. And I just wanted, before I, I asked for a motion, you know, we really, really worked hard with another provider, the one that was here in February for the workshop. They were recommended to us by several well-known city managers and consultants as the go-to for comprehensive planning. However, after weeks of work, multiple discussions and several scope realignments, we never could get the cost of that plan down to a palatable level. I think it was at the lowest we ever got it was about three times the cost of this contract we have in front of us tonight. So with that, I'm seeking approval to move forward with the contract this evening and I stand for questions.
I really appreciate staff's effort to consider this, updating this and also incorporate a kind of revenue per acre concept into this comprehensive plan. Just for the record, I will abstain on this item, given I still think there's a limited option explored and also given the potential conflict of interest. So I'll abstain on this item.
Does that put us in jeopardy of a quorum for this issue? No? Okay.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
We'll probably have to table this till the next meeting, till Alex is back.
Yeah.
All right. Because I can't vote, right?
Nope.
Be really hard for three of us to mention at a time.
Yeah.
Yeah. What's that? Oh, I would move we tabled this issue until the next meeting.
We'll bring it back on the phone.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Got a motion to table, drive a second.
A second.
Got a motion, a second to table this till the next meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is tabled till next meeting.
You got to talk all over again, Joe. You're not going to talk about the budget? Was that you, Nick?
I gave Joe a opportunity to present the budget last, last week, and I'm not going to go into the details that he did as far as where that's at. But I will do an overview of what we're proposing for the 2026 budget. At this point, we are recommending to go forward with the budget, setting a mill levy of 42.858 for the 2026 budget. That is down from what we proposed in the 20, or what was approved in the 2025 budget of 43.014 mills. I will point out that though we had about a 17% increase in valuation from, from the estimates, there is a significant amount of additional money that is going to be going towards debt service in this case. And you've got, we kind of gave you a quick rundown of the dollars, dollar amounts on that sheet. If you look on the very backside where it's highlighted on that sheet, you kind of see that revenue is not covered by debt service, increased by 521,000. So a lot of that increase in that 17% valuation is going directly towards debt service that is, was finally bonded last year that, or was bonded that will take effect in 2026 and we start making payments on. So as, as you were made aware, you know, there's a fairly steep debt clip, debt cliff that we're going to have to hit and quite a bit of those costs are going towards that. I will say, I will mention that the revenue neutral rate for 2026, we are, we are recommending exceeding it because the mill, the, the revenue neutral rate would put us at 35.621 and which, which would require us to lower our mills by almost seven, around seven mills. So it's fairly significant with that fairly steep debt, debt cliff that we have to, actually depending on this. So our recommendation is to move forward and, and have you as the council accept this proposed budget and authorize us to publish that in the Clarion and also set up revenue neutral rate, which would happen on September 8th as well as the budget hearing that would happen on that same, at that same time. And we'd stand for any questions that you have, but we've, we've tried to be fairly conservative in the budget that we brought before you. We've got a lot of other costs that are hitting us pretty hard, especially in the insurance lines. And there's just, at this point, build us, to be able to handle that and to be fairly conservative and as we grow our staff, to be able to handle additional growth, we've tried to be, take a fairly conservative approach going forward. Unfortunately, we weren't able to fund all the positions that were requested, but we've tried to be conservative in what we have added to make sure we can handle growth within the community.
My statement is, is I want to thank the staff for, I know we've had meeting after meeting after meeting. We've had workshops. We've, we've, we've gone all over the board with this thing and I appreciate anything you've done. And the insurance thing, you mentioned that. And I realize it is what it is. But the timing of our insurance, as I understand it, we just don't have time to react to, to look at better options or, can you explain that? And is there a way that we can fix that in the future?
Well, we could look, the reality of it is for us, because of the size of, and you're talking health insurance. We saw, we saw about a 10% increase in our overall, in, on our property liability insurance. So we saw an increase there as well. So, but the significant increase on the, on the health insurance piece of it.
How much was that?
It's about a 45% increase, which impacts both our employees and us.
Yeah, it's, it's everything.
It's a, it's a, it's fairly significant. But we've got, basically what, what happens is between, we've got, they give us a 60-day notice in advance when we're going to do that. And there's, the most we could do would be 90 days and a lot of that depends on the kind of health plan that we have going up. And, you know, our challenge becomes, I think, I think you'll see a lot of different communities and others that are going to see fairly healthy increases coming up here. We just happen to have renewal October 1st as opposed to December 1st, which a lot of, a lot of employers hit. We could certainly look to change that. But I don't know if this is necessarily the year, but we could, we could plan to do a renewal December 1.
I know you and I had discussion about that and it just seemed like the timing on that is just it, it, there's just no window for you to do your job.
And, you know, the hard part for our insurance is because we're such a small group, we don't have access to know what are the things that are hitting us and we can't adjust our plan accordingly. We, I think Tristan's come up with a really good plan for how we soften the blow for employees coming, coming forward. And part of it's a recommendation on, on some changes to the, to how the plan is set, to the deductibles and some of the copays and things of that nature that, that our employees are going to have a chance to hear. But it is going to mean some more deductible costs and maximum out-of-pocket costs that, that they'll get hit with. But with hope of softening at 45% increase, because it does hit us on the city side, but it also hits employees as well.
Definitely. I know Jeff had mentioned all the different options that we all have as, as a city, whereas people like us that are in the private sector who've got two, two.
And what we've talked about and, and what, what's being proposed is that we, we incentivize our employees to go to a little bit higher deductible plan. And hopefully that softens the blow for us in, in the future. And it's, it softens the hit that they'll take as well. But, you know, obviously there's pros and cons to each of those. We're not even going to show, I think, a third plan. Our, our plan is to show three out of the four that we talked about. But, and one of them is a high deductible plan as well. So there's, there's always risks with those things that, you know, people take that and don't realize the impact that a high deductible plan has on you, too, how much out-of-pocket comes with it. So there's some education that'll have to happen. And we're, that's one of the things, as we've met with our broker, that we'll plan to, to do as we promote the upcoming proposed insurance that we have.
Does the League of Municipalities or anybody like that have a co-op or something for small cities?
We, the, actually, our, our work comp provider has one and, and they didn't quote us because they're with Blue Cross Blue Shield and they opted not to quote us this time. So, but that's actually came in as a, as a group plan. We did, we did look at a couple of other providers and we actually asked our employees, I said, we'd asked our employees whether the decision to move away from Blue Cross Blue Shield, if we can get you a little bit better rate. I think there's a lot of concern moving away from a provider and whether their providers are included. We did provide a list of those that would be covered by some alternate choices that we looked at. So we heard from our employees. We asked our employees, you know, even if it meant that you'd have to pay a little bit more, is that, how strongly do you feel about sticking with our current provider? And we did hear fairly overwhelmingly that, that there was a concern with staying with Blue Cross Blue Shield.
From my standpoint, my employer made a change. I had no say in it whatsoever. It just happened. I mean, it's just, you know, the way it is.
Well, and this is not just happening to the city of Mays. I mean, this is across the board insurance. We're all health insurance.
That doesn't mean that next year we, we don't decide to do something totally different. Now, now that we know where, where we've seen our increases last two years, I think this, this is an opportunity for us to, I think we will start looking, we will start looking a little bit wider this upcoming time. But it's a fairly short turnaround to the point that we need to investigate some of our other options a little bit better.
I mean, my comment is, is it's October and everything else we have is.
Yeah, I would say there's two things. One, could we extend that timeline to get it to a December date, you know, rather than go for 12 months?
I don't know whether they'll do it like a.
Tag on an extra three months.
Although they're doing it in a team month. That's pretty untypical. But, I mean, we could certainly, I'd, I'd need to talk to, I'd need to talk to our broker.
I guess you'd have to.
What we kind of, what we kind of talked about if we moved to a different, a different insurance provider was that we do it shortened, one to get us to the end of the year and then make that decision, but I think our recommendation is still to move forward with Blue Cross Blue Shield for this upcoming year, but, but I think.
Talking about.
But I think it's, it's something that, you know, depending on where we come next year, we're going to ask for the earliest renewal date we can get, we get that data, but I think we need to be prepared in case we see those kind of similar increases.
Shoping regardless.
I think it needs to be on your front burner to, to get the calendar to match up with the budget so that you're not pushed, you don't have any time.
And cast a lighter now.
And, and, yeah, you know, I don't know much about the insurance business. I, I just.
Well, and, you know, there's, there's certainly some things we could do to, to look, I'll, I'll talk with Tristan and we'll talk with our broker if you were to go.
We represent City of Mays and it's, you know, it costs the city, the taxpayer to stay with Blue Cross, it costs us, it costs the taxpayer extra money too. It's, and it costs the workers extra money.
Good news is.
It may be the best deal, I don't know.
The good news is we're, we're crossing a threshold because we're, we're planning on hiring, hiring at least one additional person that'll go to fifty-one employees, which gives us a little bit of, which gives us more information that we have never had in the past because we've been a small employer. We're right on the cusp.
Oh, do they?
So I just thought that if we have this problem, so maybe other cities will have the similar situation, is that possible, just thinking about, we do have the SCAT. Is that possible, thinking about some kind of smaller cities get together, get a quote?
And that's what, that's what Jeff's talking about. They came in, has, has their own pool, but they, they, we asked them for a quote and we didn't get one. They, they didn't, they, they declined to quote us an amount. And part of it has to do with the fact that we had.
Yeah, good, a big good topic.
I like your thought.
We actually, we actually collected data from our employees for all their health information and submitted them to different insurance providers through IMA. They submitted them to different, we did have, you know, we, we did have some options that were just a little bit cheap, cheaper, that wouldn't have, still would have had fairly significant increases, but had a major change in those, the plans that were offered and had a different list of providers that it could cover as well.
Getting, you know, minus the insurance, I, I wanted to, as, I, I wanted to applaud you all for staff and, and the department heads. I know you guys made some cuts to get it to where it is and as, as lean as we can be, and I know everybody had a wish list and I know they all cut their wish list dramatically. And so from my standpoint, I just want to say thank you for that.
I'd say it was a real team effort and, and we had departments that knew they weren't going to get everything that they wanted, but they also took a very much of approach of let's do what's best for the organization and for the community.
And there was a lot of communication between council and staff as to, and, and, you know, what we have coming down the pike, you mentioned the debt and all that good stuff. And, and department heads and, and folks, they understand what's coming, so.
And we, you know, we've tried to.
We're all the same, we're all messed together as we used to say all the time.
We've tried to find, follow the priorities that you guys have given us with the strategic plan and, and, you know, we're pursuing costs that will be able to address things that you identified in the strategic plan too.
Anything else from council, any other questions or comments or?
Just a comment kind of corresponding to our public comment, thinking about from a transparency point of view. I know we are kind of transitioning to the new website, will be really helpful. As he suggested, we can create some kind of dashboard on our website, on our website showing our revenue composition, how we spend money. And also we, now we have the new CIP, so that's another potential way to show the citizen how we are going to spend money.
You know, and, and I think you, we actually posted the CIP in the sales tax section, but it's until we start picking it up and having, having it more visible, like having a finance section where people can see all that, a plan would be to be much more, when we, when we have an ability to have multiple people post and update their sections, this life is going to be much easier for us. And we do expect that that'll go live here early this fall, the new website. So we're taking the pieces of our current website and trying to improve it. One, to affect our transparency and putting information out, but also just to, just to push more knowledge out than what we've had the ability to do in the past. We'll have opportunity to, you know, people can sign up for updates when they get them. We don't have some of those capabilities right now, just some of the things that, it's a great web, it's, it's, it's a good website, but I think the next step's going to make it a pretty, pretty great website that, that will improve people's ability to, to learn more about where we're going, both from a strategic plan and, and where we're, where we're going spending wise as a community.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And also I know it's a little bit irrelevant to this item, but just want to comment on the switching to the new website. We are changing from org to gov, right? Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
We, we've, we've reserved the website for gov and I think at that point we'll make that transition to gov. And that, that's it, that's actually, I think, a federal requirement.
Yeah, the reason I bring this up is at the SCAT meeting, Derby kind of mentioned this, even they got hacked a few years ago and they, they think this is really a good way to get more secure website. Yeah. So I was kind of immediately text Nick asking our status, so glad that we're.
I think we secured the gov website quite some time ago in preparation for this.
Did that change our emails again then eventually? No? That's what I thought. Yeah.
Anything else?
So Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
I would like to make a motion to accept the proposed twenty twenty-six City of Mays budget as presented, authorize publication of the proposed budget in the Clarion, set the revenue neutral rate hearing for Monday, September eighth, two thousand and twenty-five at six P M. Set the public hearing on the proposed budget hearing for Monday, September eighth, two thousand and twenty-five at six P M.
I will say. I have a motion and accept, yeah, in a second, to accept the proposed twenty twenty-six City of Mays budget as presented, authorize publication of the proposed budget in the Clarion, set the revenue neutral rate hearing for Monday, September eighth, two thousand and twenty-five at six P M. And set the public hearing on the proposed budget hearing for Monday, September eighth, two thousand and twenty-five at six P M. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. And thank you for everything that everybody's done on that, it's been a long process, so. Moving on to reports, police.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. One thing I'd like to add in my report is recruit officers Pruitt and Rogers are in their third week of the academy. Things seem to be going well. Their graduation date is scheduled for October third. Other than that, I don't have anything add, to add to my report, but I would be happy to stand for any questions you may have.
Everybody good? There you go. You're gonna buy easy today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another summer.
Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Did your day get any better today?
Oh, not really, but that's okay.
I found this where I asked how his day was and he, he wasn't a happy guy.
We're hanging in there.
Okay.
Couple of things I'd like to add in my report. Alex had asked me a couple of times previously about it, but we've since, he's asked about the academy lighting along the walkway on the south side. This last week, we finished up the Atlas Electric, they've now repaired all those light fixtures, so as of at least last Friday, they were all working. And then I emailed you guys last week about a water main issue that we've had, we've discovered another one this morning. We attempted to do the electrofusion repair to the water main on Herman and Mays Road last week and it failed. So we're, we discovered the other leak this morning, so we had to spend quite a bit of time on that and we're going to go back to Herman and Mays Road next week and get that buttoned up so we can start working on the issue of fifty-third Mays now. So I wish I had a good explanation for why we're seeing so many of these, so many of these leaks lately, but the number of them I can't really explain, but the type of leak that we're seeing is consistent with what we've always seen in the past. So in the older part of town, all the water main was bored in and it was all electrofused together at that point and we're just seeing, seeing those issues come to light. It's a little over twenty-three years old now, so.
Yeah, they're all joint failures where they're fused together?
Ninety-five percent of them, yeah.
The one that popped up this morning, you think you'll be able to clamp it or?
Well, we haven't even, unfortunately, this one, the one that popped up this morning, we think is a service to Quick Shop. Again, the main's under the, under Mays Road, so, and it's a lot harder to pinpoint where that service is tapped, because there's no visible, you know, typically it'll come out of a valve box, the water will come up out of the valve box and so that's where you can start to dig, but when we've got a service line leak, we don't really know where to start. So that's what we're struggling with on that one. So I don't really want to have two open holes on Mays Road, so we're going to get one buttoned up and start on the other one, so that's our plan for the week. Couple of other things on the report I included for you guys, a task detail report that covers a lot of the labor and equipment time that we spent picking up brush this last month and then our monthly task report. And I have not forgotten that you guys still need to see a, a demo on Cartograph, our Work Order Management software. Love to do that for you some, sometime when we can get that worked out, but in the meantime, I'll continue to do my best to be transparent about some of the work we're doing and how much time and money we're spending in those areas. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Are you done picking up brush finally, or do we still have more laying around?
We are done picking up brush. We still get, still get requests a couple of times a week for people to bring them in and we're letting them do that, so.
I think as council, we really can appreciate the public work test reporting. I think it's helpful. It shows us exactly where the time is spent, so that's been a long time coming, so very appreciative of that.
We're not, we're not all the way there yet. We're still, I'd say we've got a good seventy-five percent of everything we're doing in, in the Work Order Management software and, but it's easy to put the, the planning stuff in there, it's harder to backtrack on the things that come up during the day to backtrack and get your time entered in and your materials and labor and all those kinds of things, but we're getting there.
So the meeting on the sixth, we're doing a little field trip. I wondered, could you just pull it up live here in that, on that meeting on the sixth? Spend fifteen minutes going through it?
I guess I'm not sure what you mean by field trip.
Had nothing to do with the field trip, but, other than it would be an activity we usually don't participate in, but, but you could bring it up live, right?
Yeah, I could, I could, yeah, I could bring it up on my laptop and if we can figure out and make it work, yeah, I'd be happy to do that. Or, or next, if we can't do that, so I can do it during my report next month or something. Maybe that'd be, one of those two options would probably be best.
Okay. Either one would be good. The meeting on the sixth, you, the first meeting in March is usually a little lighter.
Sure.
The fourth, or the fourth, sorry.
That's a good idea, we'll, I'll, I'll work something out.
Super, thanks.
What's your staffing at, are you a hundred percent right now, are you still short?
We are, we're, we just, just today we started a new full timer, so we're full on full timers and then my two part-time guys just left. We had a couple of college kids that started at the beginning, or at the end of their school year and they're, one of them's going to play football and the other one's going back to school, so.
Do we do those repairs with our own staff?
For the most part, yes. The, what, we actually had a contractor do the last one on Mays Road because the complexity of it, the, the struggle with, the struggle we faced with these electrofusion couplings and the way they built it is there was not enough room by the time we cut out the failed part to put a mechanical joint on the pipe, there was not enough pipe left for a mechanical joint to grab a hold of it. That might not make the most sense, but it's, it's really difficult to fix it mechanically without having to take a whole lot of it out. And once we start to remove valves and T's, it gets a little bit outside of our expertise to, to do it. For a lot of the things that we've seen, I mean, if it's a, if it's a well that's broken, we can put a clamp on it and it's really been successful. Like I said in the email, the one that we saw on Mays Road late last year, early this year was the first time I've seen that clamp fail. And the contractor that performed the work last Friday did, did say that he saw evidence that the well that broke on this one was not, was not done well.
Nick, I really appreciate all the work, public work stuff have been doing. And again, at the SCAT meeting last week, as the county public work director, Dean, gave a presentation on the storm water quality and quantity regulation thing, I think it's back in two thousand and seventeen or nineteen, I cannot remember exactly the year, they kind of identified a potential stormwater drainage issue project amount to almost a billion. I'm just wondering, have we heard anything from the county or, you know, among those projects, how many are located in the Mays boundary?
I have not, unless Mitch might have heard something, I haven't heard, I haven't heard anything from the county.
Yeah, I'll, I'll find the.
I, I can tell you that it's, and, and it's one of the things that I was going to give an update on my report, but Nick and I have been discussing quite a bit, you know, with the recent heavy rains that we had and the areas that were impacted, we're starting to build a map of those areas where we know we got challenges from a stormwater standpoint. Some, some of them will be fairly affordable fixes that can be done, but some of them may be a little bit more significant to be able to address. Some of the properties that ended up getting water in their basements and, and where we have significant issues, so.
We are, there is a, a little public works round table that we're having with area directors in September, so I'm happy to ask if you can give me a little more information on it.
Yeah, I will also find a copy of that presentation forward to you. Yep.
Thank you, sir. Landings on him.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My report pretty much stands on its own for right now. Got any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Anything for Mitch, guys? Guess not. Wow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Legal.
I don't have anything tonight. Next time I may have some information on some legislative changes that you should know about.
I want to speak with you after briefly, okay? Operations.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Attached in your agenda packets are year-to-date treasury report, a cash and budget position report, and your second quarter revenue report. Some things I kind of wanted to add here, that in June, we received a large distribution of the AdBlueRum tax in the amount of one million, seven hundred, twenty-eight thousand, two hundred, two dollars and ninety-seven cents. For both the first and second quarter combined, that's a seventeen point three five increase from two thousand and twenty-four. Currently, for two thousand and twenty-five, we have a revenue of eight hundred, thirty-nine thousand, three hundred, fifty-two dollars and nine cents in sales tax. That represents a fifteen percent increase from last year, two thousand and twenty-four, over two quarters. So those are pretty good numbers, especially that fifteen percent in sales tax, especially now moving forward, as that continues to grow and hopefully as things progress with election coming up, we can continue to see that number rising. Something else that I wanted to share with you that was. Something else that I wanted to share with you that was interesting was the amount of interest we've earned in our accounts over six months. That includes our money market account and our operations account, is $535,961.23. So that is money that's distributed through all of our funds here, including our project funds, which goes with our temp notes and bonds to pay off some of that temp note that we are working with. And I also, just in case everybody didn't know, our interest rates on those accounts are the 91-day treasury rate. So right now, that's at 4.24, so that changes.
What was it for what?
Two more things I would like to talk about, I would just like to let you guys know, we had nine firework permits pulled this year, which generated $18,000 in revenue. Last year, we had eight. And then also, I just wanted to thank Mitch, who should have mentioned earlier, but Mitch and I have been working on a better way to track letters of credits when they come in and being able to release them, and he's done quite a bit of work on that, so I just wanted to say thank you to him, so he can make that more efficient in the board. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Anything from you, Nick?
Yeah, I'll just give you a quick update on, I just want to highlight some of the things that you'll see in my, my operations report you have out there. We met with our rate study group, Matt with Rappelis, who is doing our rate study for the longer duration rate. They proposed a model that we've, we've brought back to them and asked them to do a bit of research in how it impacts all of our users that are there, but we're looking at potentially changing to the winter average consumption calculation for sewer as a possibility, but we want to make sure that the impact is in such a way that won't have more significant impact on some users versus others. But we're getting very close to a point where I think you'll see a recommendation coming up fairly quickly on where we go with our sewer rates in the future to be able to accommodate some of the things like the future water tower, additional well sites, and also final improvement to the wastewater treatment plant that'll double our capacity out there. And so I think they've come up with a good plan, and we just need to make sure it works for everybody as we go forward. I will say, we did go do a rating call recently here with S&amp;P, and we do that whenever we get a new temp note or a bond, and they affirmed our debt rating as AA minus, and so that was a good news. Going forward, what Elizabeth didn't mention is we're, we're in the process of trying to update a number of our policies, including our, we'll be making some changes to our purchasing card policy as we look to go to a little bit different, more flexible purchasing card system. We're also looking at, probably sometime in August, you'll see an update to our special assessment policy, and as I'd mentioned previously to you, looking at doing a developer's agreement and having a template that we'll have out there. And so we're getting very close on that, and we think, I think potentially in August, you'll have an update on that, and we'll ask you to consider a new policy there. We did have great attendance at our July 3 event, thanks, thanks for those that were able to make it. I think we estimate we had between 600 and 1,000 people, and it was just a great turnout. Fireworks, we got a lot of comments about having fireworks on the 3rd as a really good positive thing. That get less people, one, that less people have their own events on the 4th, but it also, you know, there's not limitations, because typically people have the 4th off, so we had really positive news about that. We've had great attendance at our, at our farm and art markets, and we, it was awful hot this last time, which did, you know, whenever that, the heat gets to that point, it does impact our attendance. We were going to have our last of our three concerts this last Friday, and it got rained out. We had a horrendous storm that came through right before the concert, and it was absolutely wet everywhere. We made the decision to postpone that. We will probably look to, to reschedule that at some point. So I think the events have been really good. Sales tax, spent a lot of time this last month presenting at public meetings. We had, this last month, we had two, the two of our four public meetings that we had on sales tax. We also held, spoke at a chamber event, and today we spoke at the Villas at Hampton, and we had about 45 people that came out and wanted to hear a little bit about the sales tax. We're getting obviously very close, and we've, we sent out some mailers, so I wonder if you guys probably got a mailer that we sent out, and we've just about given out all the signs that we have available, but if there's people that still would like to have some signs, we still have several left, but we think we've done as good as we can do to push that out, and we'll, now it's a wait and see what happens. I'll say that we're on pace right now with building permits, have another very successful year. We've issued 69 single-family permits, 27 duplexes, and one commercial at this point. And I think you're starting to see some of the projects that I think, it's all going to depend on timing and when some of those infrastructure projects get done, but I think you're going to start to see, I think you see a big push at the end of the year for additional building permits as well. So really, a lot of it's due to timing of infrastructure in some of these neighborhoods. That's really all I've got at this point, unless there's questions on anything that I did go over, or anything else.
I would just echo what you said on the 4th of July, or I guess it was the 3rd of July, but celebrating the 4th of July. I've heard lots of positive feedback from folks on how great of a time that was and how well done it was. So great job, everybody that had a part in doing that.
Thank you. Thank you, Nick.
Wish I could have been there.
I wish you could have been there, too.
Yeah, I bet.
Council member reports, Kevin. Anything?
Yeah, a few things. One is, and I probably should know this, but I'm going to ask anyway, what, what is the timeline? We were talking about doing an accounting upgrade with how the accounts are distributed. What, what's the timeline on that?
Just to clarify, you're talking about a new chart of accounts, correct?
Yeah.
So it's going to be with migration with our new Tyler Technology ERP. We're still kind of, I believe it's at the beginning of this upcoming year, in January, that we're going to be migrating. Unfortunately, it's going to take about four months to officially get finance over, and so really to move our chart of accounts, we need to at the end of the year. We've already budgeted in our accounts for next year, so we're looking at January 1st of 2027 to have our new charter accounts up and running, ready to go.
Yeah, can't do it in the middle of a year.
I think that would be a tracking nightmare. So, yes, that is not best practice, so.
Okay, thank you. Couple of things. Thanks, everybody, for the work on the budget. It was long, but it was a lot of good work, the transparency was great. If it keeps getting better, well, next year will be a breeze, right? All the concerts were great, 4th July was super disappointing, we got rained out. I know the equipment was all set up, ready to go, but by the time that storm kind of, it kind of came out of nowhere. Yeah, and then it's hard to say, oh, we'll set it back up after it's raining. Yeah, yeah. So no, it, it was great, the flags out on the 4th are always great, so it was, it was good all the way around. Thanks for everybody's work on those, because I know it's not easy putting those deals together, and Tristan does a great job, and everybody chips in and helps out, so all the staff, I mean, that's it for me.
Thank you.
I'd like to echo the sentiments on the 4th or the 3rd event. I thought it was great. I was there, and it was a really great show and a great time. I think people were having a lot of fun, and I do appreciate the flags going up again. And as far as the budget, I know everybody spent a lot of time and effort to get us to the point we're at. I think we've really come leaps and bounds as far as projecting for future years, and I think that's going to just make it easier and easier every year. I know it's hard, but I think we're getting there, so those would be my comments.
Thank you. Jeff?
Nothing more for me?
Doctor? Just a couple of things. First, I also missed that July 3 thing, I just got back midnight, but appreciate all the hard work. I wish I could attend that. As I mentioned, the SCAP meeting, I think I was the, the first time I was the only one from Mays there. I need to wear double hats, but I do give them the update on our sales tax information, and also changing the logo. I said we, now we have, together with the R.I. Because kind of like echoed their thing when they talked about the stormwater collaboration. Last but not least, Mystic Lakes held Kansas State Water Ski Tournament over the last weekend. We got, you know, just yesterday, and the day before yesterday, got over 60 skiers, and this coming weekend will have the Midwest Regional Tournament. So I guess it will be triple the skiers, all the welcome to show up and watch. And I think that event bring in all the, not only out of Mays, I mean, people, but also out of, out of the region, so that's good for our economic environment. Yeah, that's all from me. Thank you.
Bring some of the champions or medalists from that with you.
That's my daughter. Thank you for mentioning that. She got the champion for the growth rate, and she also broke the Kansas state record of trick in that age group. So the record was about 12 years ago, or 15 years ago. It's 15, 20, and she's got 27.60.
Congrats.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
You actually have water in the lake this year.
Oh, yeah. I reached the level to the year that I got here.
Awesome.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor's report, I really don't have anything, I just, you know, everybody's talked about the budget, and I have, and thank you, staff, and again, with all the concerts, I did make those, by the way. The 4th of July was spectacular, it was great, and I hope we build on those things. That was our vision as a council many years ago for Academy with Claire Donley going back there and the amphitheater, and so that's exactly what my vision is, is to have things like that happen. So let's, let's keep it going, keep building on it, so that's all I have. With that, unless there's anything else, I would take an opportunity to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Motion, a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.